While the regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, November 12th, 2013 is ordered, may we take a roll?
Commissioner Bushy?
Here.
Commissioner Crisio?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Rubino?
Here.
Mayor Costelli?
Here, we're all here. Next item is the invocation, Reverend Dr. Scott Miller, Drake Avenue Presbyterian Church of Ferndale. May we stand for the invocation?
Let us pray. Almighty and ever gracious God, by the power of your spirit, you rule the world with truth and grace, and you work through government leaders who seek the well-being of their citizens to exercise your gracious rule in towns and cities across the face of this good earth. Guide the city commission of Pleasant Ridge as they meet tonight. Bless in particular newly-elected Mayor Kurt Metzger and City Commissioners Brett Scott and Jay Foreman. Grant them wisdom to discern your will for this community and the courage to act on it. Grant that all who hold public office here in Pleasant Ridge may do their work in a spirit of justice, mercy, and peace. Help them to use their authority to serve their constituents faithfully and to promote the general welfare of every resident. Good and loving God, we pray for the city of Pleasant Ridge. Bring reconciliation where there have been sharp differences, healing where there is still pain, and comfort where there is distress. Help us who live and work here to come together as neighbors to build a community where all are welcomed, all are respected, and all are cared for. This we humbly and earnestly pray in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get started on the agenda items, there are various liaison appointments that have been recommended. There has been a change made necessary due to scheduling conflicts with respect to one of the appointments, so I would entertain a motion to amend Agenda Items 12G and I to move the liaison for the Woodward Avenue Action Association Executive Board and the Woodward Avenue Transit Committee from Commissioner Jay Foreman to Commissioner Ann Perry. Is there a motion to solemnly amend the agenda?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. The agenda is amended. Next item is consideration of the following minutes: Public hearing in zoning board of appeals meeting held Tuesday, October 8th, 2013, and public hearing of regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, October 8th, 2013. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move the minutes of the public hearing in zoning board of appeals and the public hearing of regular city commission meeting held Tuesday, October 8th, 2013 be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Any questions, comments, or corrections? May we take a vote?
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Next item is the monthly dispersment report. Amy?
Payroll on accounts payable for the month of October was provided to all of you prior to the meeting. Payroll is $52,361.96. Accounts payable was $715,960.80, of which $365,569.53 were in tax liabilities.
Any questions? Is there a motion to accept the dispersment report?
Mr. Mayor, move the October 13 dispersment report to be received and filed.
Is there support?
I support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries. Before the next agenda item, I'd like to go slightly off-agenda. I noticed that the city manager is wearing her Pleasant Ridge pin upside down.
Oh, I hope not for the photos.
But Sherri, would you come over here because that pin needs replacing?
Oh, well.
Here is the 25-year.
Yeah.
And also, if I can hog this seat one last time.
Oh, thank you so much. It's so appreciated.
With that...
I'll open this at the reception.
Sure, that's fine. Next item is the official certification and election report of the general election held Tuesday, November 5th, 2013. Amy?
Mr. Mayor, approximately 53 percent of Pleasant Ridge registered voters turned out to the polls on November 5th. 635 ballots were cast in Precinct 1 and 610 ballots were cast in Precinct 2. So that's a total of 1,245 voters for that election. The vote tally is as follows: For Mayor, Kurt Metzger received 650 votes; Frank Rubino received 583 votes; for City Commissioner, Brett Scott received 747 votes; Jay Foreman received 718 votes; and Ryan Stern received 646 votes.
Is there a motion to approve the election certification report?
Your honor, I move that the official certification election report of the city general election be received and filed.
Is there support?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubino?
Yes.
Commissioner Bushy?
Yes.
Commissioner Crisio?
Yes.
Mayor Costelli?
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, if I could interrupt for a moment. We have a small presentation that we'd like to do at this time before the swearing-in and before the former commissioners leave the podium. So I've asked Scott to read something, because I don't think I could.
Okay. Good evening, mayors and commissioners. I just have a couple things to read. One, on a personal note here, I have something that I wanted to say to the city commissioner and the city manager. I was a 23-year-old fresh graduate from Central Michigan University, and it was October of 1998, and I came across a job posting. It was for the city of Pleasant Ridge. I was an intern at Huntington Woods at the time, so I was familiar with what they called the community on the other side of the freeway. I completed my internship in December and began working at the county, helping with recreation computer software and prepping the parks for winter, just something to do with my time, basically. I received a letter for an interview from Pleasant Ridge, and I was surprised because this was for a director's position, and I was so inexperienced and young. I went to the interview with my portfolio in hand, ready to wow the panel. The two things I remember about the interview now, that was 15 years ago, and I'm constantly reminded of, the first is that I could not stop talking about how excited I was and ready to step in and be a part of the Pleasant Ridge team. And the second was the boisterous female with the white hair. Of course, this was Ms. Sherri W. Ball. I was on a phone interview with another city when I had a call waiting beep in from a 248 number, and it was Pleasant Ridge offering me a position for recreation director. I clicked over to the other interview and said that I had to stop because I was accepting another position. So I went back and I asked them when I could start. So on March 1st of 1999 was the start of a long, exciting, and at times difficult relationship between Sherri and myself. For those of you that know her, you should never be surprised of anything that she says. It took me a while to get used to that, and still, still at times, it takes a little bit of time. As time passed and we both learned each other's habits, good and bad, I realized I needed to follow her more closely, take notes on her toughness, and understand her weaknesses. And at the same time, I could see she was doing the same with me. As a working relationship turned into a friendship, I could see that I was the lucky one. How could I stand up to some of the people she has gone to battle with for the best interests of the city? How could I juggle a family, work, social, and life schedule the way she does? And the answer is, I can't. We have so many stories together, it's hard to begin to even think of them all. The long dream cruise weekends where we were ready to kill each other, the fearful drives on the freeway, Sherri is not good at driving on the freeway, unless, of course, she's in control of the vehicle, big surprise there. The many lunchroom conversations, the social events we all took part of, tiger games, the racetrack, movies, but most of all, how you were always there to talk about a problem in my life that was not necessarily work-related and always had advice for me on how to get through it. You've watched me grow up over the last 15 years and become what I would like to think a responsible, upstanding member of society, of which I have a lot of that to thank you for. I feel the need to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to learn from you when I was seeking so much knowledge, when I was asking many questions. You patiently listened and answered accordingly, barely showing signs of frustration. Thank you for taking the time to show me the necessary skills today that will lead me with confidence into tomorrow, for believing in me and having enough faith to share your dreams and your vision. Thank you for accepting me as I am, with all my faults and my sheer joy over the little things in life. You never tried to slush that spirit in me. Instead, you encouraged that spirit, and for that, I do thank you. I realize the knowledge I need for work can be acquired anywhere, taught by most anyone, but the life skills I needed to go along with it, well, that would have been taught by a very unique individual with a very special gift for giving, a gift of patience and understanding, and that someone is you: My boss, my coworker, my teacher, my role model, my mentor, and above all, my friend. I know that this departure will be difficult for all of us, and you do not have to tough through it all by yourself. We are here for you. Your immediate family's here for you, and your Pleasant Ridge family's here for you. You will be missed in so many ways, and thank you.
Now, Scott, you left out white hair one day, purple hair the next day, yellow hair I heard.
So on another somber note, I would say, and a celebration at the same time, Mayor Costelli, on behalf of the city manager, myself, the city clerk, the police chief, and all the employees of the city, we'd also like to recognize and offer our sincere thank you to you for many years of service to the city. You have been an exemplary role model for so many, and your integrity, talents, and spirit will be forever marked in the history of Pleasant Ridge. Thank you for allowing an administration that provided a positive work environment where we could strengthen our own talents for the betterment of the community of Pleasant Ridge. In the spring of 2014, one of our city's most beautiful benches will be installed in your honor of your tenure as mayor of Pleasant Ridge. And that's on behalf of the employees, so we appreciate all that you've done for us. And I actually made a phone call to Ralph this morning to talk to him about a couple things, so it was probably the last time that I'll do that on anything of the city's business, so it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Scott.
So we have a gift on behalf of the city also that Sherri will present to you, and there's also one in front of you, a gavel with inscription, and again, thank you.
I'll open it with the reception. And I'll break my gavel.
At the same time, also, we have another commissioner that is going to be stepping down, Jerry Bushy, who's been on the commission since 2001. And actually, we were going through some of the pictures today, and we were having a hard time figuring out what some of the years were, but we can always count on Jerry having his eyes closed in the pictures. That was always something, so we always thank Richard for taking numerous pictures so we can picture. Jerry, I want to thank you for, you know, always being there, being able to make a phone call, being able to talk to you, you know, as a friend, as a leader. You've done a lot for the city. You've been, you know, involved more than 20 years in one shape or another, whether that be the recreation commission, the foundation, the city commission. You've left a mark on the city that we'll never forget, so we thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
And last but not least, Commissioner Rubino, we appreciate the last four years that we've got to spend with you, you know, your great personality and always being able to have a great story about your experience in another city or even your time here in Pleasant Ridge. So it's always a pleasure to work with you as volunteer outside of city commission business, doing some things over at the community center for us, and we have a small token of our appreciation for you also. Thank you. And also, along with that, Ralph, we do have a number of proclamations that were sent over for you. One from Vincent Gregory, he sends his regards. And we also have one from Carl Levin and Debbie Stadnow, and also from Ellen Cogan Lipton.
Thank you.
There's some of those, so thank you.
We have a couple more.
And we have a couple more, I believe some of the sitting commissioners would like to present. Thank you.
Hi, on behalf of Oakland County Board of Commissioners, we've got a couple of presentations we'd like to make, proclamations. We're fortunate enough to have our old county commissioner for Pleasant Ridge, Alan Zack there as well, so.
Commissioner Emeritus.
Former. Former.
First of all, being involved myself in local government for a lot of years myself, I know how much time and effort it takes, probably a lot more than what the residents believe, and it just takes an awful lot of time. And your commitment to this community is something to really be admired. And thank all of you, Jerry, Frank, and Mayor. You've done a fabulous job, and you're going to be missed, that's for sure, but I'm sure that if anybody calls, you'll be more than happy to work with them and set them in the straight direction. With that, the first proclamation is for our long-term city manager, Sherri Ball.
In honor of Ralph, I'm not going to read a proclamation. But if you want to.
I'll skip it.
I'd read it better.
I won't read it then either, I'll. Sherri, thanks for your so many years of dedicated service. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you so much.
Yeah, we got to get in there.
If you don't mind.
No. Okay. Well, there you go. I need you to pop out.
Okay. We want Sherri.
Yeah, we're going to bring you right out here. Bring you right here. It's their shit. Come on, let's give it some time.
That's mine.
So you're only going to do this one? Okay, go ahead and present the plaque.
You're going to make me look fat.
Who put the plaque in front of you? There we go. Okay, look right here, big smile. One more for good luck. Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you. Don't let your granddaughter do that. Thank you both. I should tell you, I'll add this, some of the things that I've done over the years, I can't even believe myself so early, but there was a time when President Clinton was in office, and it was his idea that he was going to go around the country and stay with people. So I wanted him to stay with Ralph. And I never went through proper channels because of the wait forever, and, you know, I would call directly to the White House a number of times. And so I called, and, you know, sure enough, I got a person on the phone, and I said, "I understand that the president is promoting, and here we have this wonderful community, and it's in the Detroit metro region," just really made a good pitch for it. And sure enough, I got a letter back that maybe it was going to be considered, but I hadn't told Ralph. I waited, because I thought, "Well, I'm not going to get him excited." I waited a little while just to see if it'll happen.
Is it coming next weekend?
And I think a second letter came. He was coming to Michigan, and the second letter came, and I called him and said, "Well, I just want you to know that, you know, I did offer up your house for a visit from the president." And he said, "Well, you better let me know so I can tell Debbie."
We know the boss of that.
And so, anyway, he went somewhere else, but it was kind of a fun story. And you do expect a letter from President Obama, hopefully for me and you.
Thank you.
Yes.
And also, Mr. Mayor, again, thank you for your so many years of dedicated service. Like I say, it's a tough job, and you did a fine job at it, so congratulations. Thank you.
There we go. Anyway, that's the best trophy right there. Okay, big smile. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thanks.
Now, if we can get Amy front to center and start with Mayor-elect Metzger.
Will you take these?
I, Kurt Metzger?
I, Kurt Metzger?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code?
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office of mayor?
Of the office of mayor.
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain?
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain?
An honest and efficient administration?
An honest and efficient administration?
Of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge?
Of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge?
Free from partisan distinction or control?
Free from partisan distinction or control?
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Commissioner-elect Foreman?
I, Jay Foreman?
I, Jay Foreman?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code?
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office of city commissioner?
Of the office of city commissioner?
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain?
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain?
An honest and efficient administration?
An honest and efficient administration?
Of affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge?
Of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge?
Free from partisan distinction or control?
Free from partisan distinction or control?
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Commissioner-elect Foreman?
I, Jay Foreman?
I, Jay Foreman?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code?
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office of mayor?
Of the office of mayor?
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain?
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain?
An honest and efficient administration?
An honest and efficient administration?
Of affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge?
Of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge?
Free from partisan distinction or control?
Free from partisan distinction or control?
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
Commissioner-elect Foreman?
I, Jay Foreman?
I, Jay Foreman?
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Constitution of the State of Michigan?
The Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code?
Pleasant Ridge City Charter and City Code?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
Of the office of city commissioner?
Of the office of city commissioner?
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain?
And I will endeavor to secure and maintain?
An honest and efficient administration?
An honest and efficient administration?
Of affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge?
Of the affairs of the city of Pleasant Ridge?
Free from partisan distinction or control?
Free from partisan distinction or control?
According to the best of my abilities?
According to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
I have one more statement before we start the official meeting, if I may. I'll read it as quickly as I can. As you know, this is my last city commission meeting, and I just want to thank the community of Pleasant Ridge for 26, 24 years. I think I've worked for nine or 10 different governing bodies as a city manager, and everyone was different, but all had common visions, and there were very different personalities. That was a challenge sometimes, but it's been an interesting experience, to say the least. Of the 100-plus people, there's always been one constant, and that was Mayor Costelli. How fortunate was I to have had the privilege of working with Ralph. He is as near to genius as anyone I know, and his love for this community is beyond belief. His dedication is astounding, and his mind is brilliant. His friendship is golden, and I am blessed to call him my friend. That said, I really should thank Debbie Costelli, because I was the other woman in Ralph's life for all of these years, and Debbie was the consummate friend, the perfect wife for this public life. So tonight, I'm thankful for Debbie and her tolerance of me. I can't tell you how difficult this job was sometimes, yet it was always rewarding. I thank you, Pleasant Ridge, for the honor of being your city manager for 15 years, for your city clerk for six years, and the various other positions I held. I thank you for bestowing your trust in me and my administration, and I leave knowing that I did my very best to preserve your trust. I thank you for sharing your lives with me, your personal stories, and allowing me to share my life with you. You've given me the very best gift anyone could ever offer, and that's your friendship, and I thank you for that. I've made forever friends while working here, and I will take with me memories that I will cherish forever. What a privilege it's been working with some of the most talented and loyal employees a person could ever hope for. I am thankful for them tonight, and I now leave them to your trust, knowing that they will carry on with integrity and grace. I offer special thanks to Scott and Amy, Carl and Darren, and don't forget Rodney, though he's employed by Breiler. He's really one of our team. There's nothing we couldn't tackle together, and there's nothing we wouldn't do for each other. I am thankful for them tonight, and I love them all. I am thankful for our police officers that take our jobs so seriously, but carry with them a kind heart. And I like to think that it's my lectures that led to that kind heart. And I am thankful for their respect and trust that they afforded me. I have so many stories that just flood my mind related to the police department, but tonight, I'll just tell you that I am thankful for Glenn, and Jay, and Rob, and Michael, Kevin, and of course, Hunting. I love them all. One of the most important relationships that a city manager has is the one you build with the city attorney. And I've worked with two of the finest attorneys in the land, Don Gillis and Charlie Cooper. I've learned so much from each of these esteemed gentlemen, but again, it's their friendship that I will take with me and cherish forever. Tonight, I am thankful for Don and Charlie. And finally, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our professional consultants, who became friends to the city and friends to me: Bill Westrich, Lori Rose, Larry Yaffa, Boris Yustan, Bobby Banzinski, Dave Allen, and of course, John Echoangeli. So many hours I spent with these consultants on project new ideas, problem-solving, and sometimes just for fun. I know their families, I know their kids' names. It's a very special relationship that Pleasant Ridge has been able to build with their professional consultants. And I was fortunate to be mentored by the best of the best and work side-by-side with genius, and all of them earned my respect in the cities. In closing, I would just offer a heartfelt congratulations to the new mayor and commissioners, and wish you well in this most honorable role on the commission. There are big shoes to fill, and you will do a job, and you will complete a job well done. If you follow the historic path that Pleasant Ridge has been traveling for the past 20 years, you will lead with honor and integrity, with truth and sincerity, and you will earn the respect and trust of a community we are all so proud to call home. So thank you, and good night, Pleasant Ridge. You will be in my heart forever. That's it. Well, maybe the new guys can finally sit down.
Kurt? The gavel is yours.
I'm so excited.
Don't let anybody steal.
Always wanted a gavel.
Good luck.
Coming up this one?
Oh, my goodness. I'll never do it.
I can usually go here.
Remember that Jesus.
Great. Want to try the gavel? Look at that. Field of color. Beautiful.
You all look so different from up here. Before I start, I just wanted to, since everybody's been going off the record tonight. And see, Sherry hasn't left yet. Thank you, Sherry, for hanging around. I wanted to thank my family, particularly my wife, Jody, who you're probably going to hear more about in the coming years, and my daughter, Leah, is here. Her grandchild, my grandchild, Claire, and soon-to-be twins coming along. Should be exciting, so. And just another comment, I've only been here in mayor for five minutes, and please give me some, give me a break. Ralph was here for 20 years, so if I make some mistakes early on, it's okay. This is, if you don't, if you don't know, I heard this morning on the radio that this was a big day for marriages because it's 11, 12, 13. So it's a perfect day. We will remember this. It won't be hard to remember when we all started. So, my first task is to call for the city commission liaison reports. So we'll start with Recreation Commission, Commissioner Crizziak.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item I'd like to share with the community, and it's something that I know the Recreation Commission is really excited about, and it's this week. So we all have an opportunity to put it on our schedules. It's the Thanksgiving Artist Market, which takes place this weekend. Now, the Recreation Commission has been working on putting on this event led by the tireless work of Sue Turpak. She always puts all her effort in making this a fantastic event. And it'll be an opportunity for residents and your friends and family to come and look at some of the great local talent, artistic talent we have in this community and surrounding communities, and pick up some holiday gifts. I know sometimes, you know, we don't like to talk about the holidays in advance of, especially Christmas, in advance of Thanksgiving, but this is a, this is not Target. This is your neighbors and your friends, and they have some great things that, that are going to be on, that are going to be for sale. So it all kicks off Friday, this Friday, November 15th at 6:00 PM. And there'll be a microbrew tasting and munchies for those who attend on Friday evening from 6:00 to 9:00. There'll be a $5 admission fee for this evening, but with that $5, it gets you some beer tasting and also gets you in Saturday as well if you want to come back and nurse that hangover. On Saturday, admission will be $2. Again, it'll be free if you've attended on Friday. And that starts at 10:00 AM, and we will close up at 5:00. Also, this is a great thing that the Recreation Commission does, again. We collect canned goods and non-perishable items for those in need during the coming winter season. So if you could, we'll have a box available at the entry for canned and dry goods to help those in need. And everything collected this weekend will go to the Open Hand Food Pantry. So it's a, it's a great event. Please come by if you can. Like I said, there's a lot of Pleasant Ridge residents, residents who will be showing their wares. I think we have 11 of our friends and neighbors who will be selling their items, so please come by. We had a rec. meeting on 10/30. We had a great discussion. We had a lot of residents who participated in discussing the development of our Recreation Master Plan. I felt it was a great opportunity for residents to hear about the development of the plan, to give some immediate feedback, and Mr. Eiko Angelie led a very productive discussion. So that was during our last rec. meeting. We will continue that conversation at our next rec. meeting, which has been changed to November 26th at 7:00 PM. Because the initial date landed in the week of Thanksgiving, it was discussed to move it up a little bit from the Wednesday. I believe that's the Tuesday of that week, November 26th. So please, this is another opportunity, if you're interested at all, which should be. And the Rec. Master Plan, it's a great opportunity. I know Mr. Eiko Angelie led a really great discussion. Scott was there, and we, we just had a really great discussion. So if you want to participate in that discussion, please come November 26th, 7:00 PM at the Community Center. And in relation to that, we also have an opportunity to review the Recreation Master Plan, which is currently online. There's a 30-day review period, and it ends this Thursday, November 14th. So please, you can stop by City Hall and get a copy of the proposed Rec. Master Plan, and you could submit your comments or impressions in writing by email or online at www.the ridge.org. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. May I just add that there will be other opportunities for, when the 14th ends, that may be the time for the comments on the, on the web, but we will continue the process and have public meetings. There'll be much more opportunities to get engaged around the master plan and also to see some of the other renderings of the Gainsborough Project. So stay tuned. It's not, if you don't get in on Thursday, we want your comments, but it's not too late after that. The next is Planning Commission DDA, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor Metzger and City Commission. That was weird. Oh, that's funny. Well, Commissioner Bushy was the liaison of the Planning Commission, so I will get your report. The Planning Commission reviewed the results from the master plan survey at their last meeting. There's a number of residents in attendance, and everybody got a copy of those. 216 respondents to that survey, and that was a nice, a nice turnout for that, for that survey. We received a lot of useful data that Beckenrader's going to put together and put it into the master plan so we can start moving forward on the city's master plan. This is separate from the recreation plan. So we'll start seeing those, that document start to come out in pieces. We already have, some of the Planning Commission Subcommittee members have seen some of the demographic information and some of the other things that go into the plan. A lot of these plans are, as I said, the Recreation Commissioner general type data that gets put in there from numerous different sources. So that's kind of what we're putting together now, and then we'll, we'll move forward with the survey results in there. Also, the Planning Commission set up a subcommittee to look at ADUs, which is our accessory dwelling units, which is a garage that you could live in, so to speak. So that group has met one time already, and they'll, they should have some recommendations about what to do about ADUs to the Planning Commission within a few months. And then if there's any, any changes or anything that they're going to recommend, those would of course come to the City Commission. That's all.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Historical Commission, Amy.
Mr. Mayor, the Historical Commission met on November 6th. They would like to invite you to have your photo taken with Santa at the Holiday Tree Lighting, which will take place December 2nd at 6:00 PM. They are also working on their next speaker series, which will happen just after the first of the year. They have invited a former city commissioner to do a presentation, so I'm hoping that he will be able to do that. And that's what the Historical Commission has, that's what they're working on.
Thank you. And as is always the case, everything else comes from Ann.
So on, a little for, a little advance notice right now for the Woodward Transit Alternatives Analysis. They are having a public outreach meeting, some open houses and presentations that SEMCOG will present on December 11th. It's a Wednesday night, and it's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in, at the, in Ferndale at the Coolidge Intermediate School, which is right off Bermuda. And there, they'll be answering questions, everything from, you know, why did we choose BRT? How long will the, the trip take, you know, from Pontiac to Detroit? And all the different, different legs, not legs, but different parts of that. And then how, you know, how's it going to operate with SMART and DDOT? And lots of any other questions that you have, too. So it's a really great opportunity to come and ask questions. There's also tomorrow, actually, Mayor Metzger and I are going to go to a meeting that they're really, because they're trying to focus in on our different sections of Woodward now and how that will actually be developed, incorporating things like complete streets and the transit. And so we'll be going and really talking, hearing what they, what they're thinking, and then also really making sure we let them know what the, the city would like to see, too. And find out about what the different alternatives are, and make sure that they're focusing on some of the connections, you know, everything from how we can cross Woodward more safely to also how we can go north and south more safely as well. And then we have some school board members here, so during governmental reports, we'll let the school board report. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Before we move on to the next item, there's one thing that I forgot to say or passed up, and that's, I wanted to thank the, what is it, 1,243 voters who came out?
1,245.
Forty-five, see? Two more that I just somehow missed. I wanted to thank the 1,245, and I recognize that not all of you voted for us. And I know it was a well, a hard-fought campaign, and it was very divisive at times, but I'm hoping that now that it's over and now that we are seated up here, that we can bring this community together again. We all are here for the same purpose. We all love this community. There's no reason that there should be any divisions, and we all want to make sure that everybody feels welcome, everybody's opinion is welcome, and that we hope that we can get this kind of turnout at every meeting. That would be terrific. And then we will have to move it up to the Community Center. So we just want to make sure that this is a real, that you feel welcome and that everybody, regardless of who you voted for, we're all here for the same purpose. We all want the best for Pleasant Ridge, and we want to hear from you and keep you engaged. So I just wanted to make that point. The next thing is, please sit back because I'm going to read the City Commission organizational items. This is something that happens every two years, so it's a listing of how everybody's going to be distributed in terms of their responsibilities. So these are the organizational items. Establishment of the second Tuesday of each month at 7:30 PM as the regular City Commission Meeting Day. The adoption of Robert's Rules of Order for the City Commission and other city-appointed bodies. Appointment of Commissioner Ann Perry as Deputy Mayor, term to expire November 10th, 2015. Authorization of Mayor Kurt Metzger and Deputy Mayor Ann Perry, City Commissioner Jason Crizziak, City Clerk Amy Allison, and Police Chief Carl Swiskowski to sign checks on behalf of the city of Pleasant Ridge. Appointment of Commissioner Jason Crizziak as Liaison to the Pleasant Ridge Police Board, term to expire November 10th, 2015. Appointment of Commissioner Jason Crizziak as Liaison to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission, term to expire November 10th, 2015. Appointment of Commissioner Ann Perry as Liaison to the Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission and Downtown Development Authority, and as was said at the beginning of the meeting, also the Woodward Avenue Action Association Executive Board and the Woodward Avenue Transit Committee, terms to expire November 10th, 2015. Appointment of Commissioner Brett Scott as Liaison to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission, term to expire November 10th, 2015. Appointment of Commissioner Jay Foreman as Representative to the Ferndale Public Schools Superintendent's Advisory Committee, term to expire November 10th, 2015. Appointment of Mayor Kurt Metzger as the Legislative Coordinator to the Michigan Municipal League. Appointment of Mr. Charles Digby as the Pleasant Ridge Police Commissioner, term to expire November 10th, 2015. Appointment of City Clerk Amy Allison as the City Representative and Assistant City Manager Scott Petersak as Alternative to the Intergovernmental Cable Communications Authority, term to expire November 10th, 2015. Appointment of Mayor Kurt Metzger, Commissioner Ann Perry, and Assistant City Manager Scott Petersak as the city's Representatives to the Fire Protection Agreement Committee, term to expire November 10th, 2015. Appointment of Assistant City Manager Scott Petersak as Delegate and Administrative Assistant Darren Humphreys as Alternate to the Woodward Dream Cruise Board of Directors, term to expire November 10th, 2015. Appointment of Assistant City Manager Scott Petersak as Delegate and Administrative Assistant Darren Humphreys as Alternate to the Southeastern Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority SACWA Board of Trustees. Appointment of Assistant City Manager Scott Petersak as Delegate and Administrative Assistant Darren Humphreys as Alternate to the Southeastern Oakland County Water Authority SACWA Board of Trustees. Appointment of Ms. Stacy Stutcher and Mr. Dave Tigert to the Huntington Woods Library Board. Appointment of Assistant City Manager Scott Petersak as Act 51 Administrator for the city of Pleasant Ridge. Appointment of Mayor Kurt Metzger as Delegate and Assistant City Manager Scott Petersak as Alternate to the Annual Meeting of the Michigan Municipal League to be held October 2014. Appointment of Amy Allison as Officer Delegate to the Municipal Employees Retirement System, MERS, annual meeting to be held in September 2014. And Appointment of Assistant City Manager Scott Petersak as the city's Freedom of Information Act FOIA Coordinator. Is there a motion to accept?
Your Honor, I move Items 12A through 12U regarding the organization of the 2013 through 2015 Pleasant Ridge City Commission be approved. Is there support?
A second.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. The next item is consideration of establishing a public meeting, public hearing on Tuesday, December 10th, 2013, at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on the proposed Oakland County Community Development Block Grant Program, year 2014, community application and recipient agreement. Can you hear it? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item, an annual item, that the city, the governing body of a community must approve and schedule a public hearing on how the CBPG funds may be spent. The first step in the process is to establish the public hearing, and then at the December meeting, the city court will outline for you how the funds will be allocated to Pleasant Ridge. We did receive a reduction due to cuts at the federal level, and those, of course, trickled down. But we will be able to use the amount allocated on a program that'll benefit the city. And therefore, my recommendation is the public hearing be established for December 10th at 7:30 at the City Commission meeting.
Is there a motion to approve?
Your Honor.
I'm sorry. Don't ask me to do one.
Your Honor, I move a public hearing to solicit public comments on the 2014 Community Development Block Grant, CBPG, community application and sub-recipient agreement be established for Tuesday, December 10th, 2013, at 7:30 PM as recommended.
Is there support?
Support. Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Sherry, I appreciate your memo on this item. And could you describe what we have targeted the amount for?
Yep. If you notice in your memo, which, I should tell you that this is a program that's been administered by the city clerk for a number of years. And it's been interesting to see how that funding has changed and what we have been able to use. I remember some years ago, we were actually able to do a citywide sidewalk. I remember some years ago, we were actually able to do a citywide sidewalk replacement program. And so, but funding now is at a level of, I think, $5,000 is the maximum. And the categories that we qualify for are so limited, I believe that the city clerk is recommending that the money be used in the administration category?
It's public services for senior services. Part of that, part of that funding will go towards staff to put on the senior dinners, trips for, for seniors, and then the rest of it will go towards the program, different kinds of lectures that they may have, or, again, to pay, offset the cost of events that they do, trips or other kind of event.
I appreciate that. One thing I think would be useful at the public hearing is maybe if residents knew, maybe, how these funds would be targeted, maybe they would have recommendations for events or different things that they would like to see that money targeted for. Would that be appropriate at that time for residents to come forward in that manner?
Yes, at the public hearing would be the perfect time for them to make any comments.
Okay, thank you.
Is there support for the motion?
Support.
May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is consideration of entering into an agreement with the Michigan Municipal League for the selection of a new city manager. Sharon?
Mayor of the City Commission, this item has been discussed by the city commission, and that is to look for a replacement for the city manager. As you know, your city manager is retiring. So, the Michigan Municipal League, of which we are a member, provides a service to communities, and they conduct a search, they obviously are connected to the city manager field, they know managers that are seeking employment, and they do a great job of soliciting applications. The nice part is, is from beginning to end, they will handle all of the scheduling of the interviews. The very first thing they do is meet with the elected officials, so as soon as you can approve the contract, they would want to schedule a meeting with you. And the purpose of that meeting is for you to tell them what it is you're looking for in a city manager. So, you'll be provided an opportunity, not only to tell them what you're looking for in that person, but to describe the community, and that way, it, it allows the representative to solicit applicants that would be the best fit for the city as well. The process, as you started, is confidential, because the applicants often apply, they currently have a job, and so they are not looking to have their names released. Once you narrow down the applicants to a manageable number of whatever you decide, usually it's, you know, 10-ish, then the candidates for interviews are notified that there's a potential their names would be released to the press. So, I'm guessing, if you were able to follow the schedule that I discussed with the MML and suggested to you, that there is a good possibility that you could actually hire a city manager by March. And it's all dependent on your timeframe and schedules of working with them. Applications are sent to someone other than an elected official or a city manager, unless the city manager is leaving, obviously, but I didn't express any interest in this. And my recommendation was that the city clerk be designated as the person to work directly, and she would be the conduit between you and the Michigan Municipal League.
Wonderful, thank you. Is there a motion?
Your Honor, I move that the city of Pleasant Ridge contract the services of the Michigan Municipal League to assist in the selection of a new city manager for a cost not to exceed $8,500 plus expenses, and that the city clerk be appointed as the contact person between the MML and the elected officials as recommended.
Is there a second?
A support.
Okay. May we take a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. The next item is consideration of the process for hiring an interim, interim city manager. This would be presumably someone who does not have any intention of getting the full-time job. The Michigan Municipal League does have a list of, of potential interim city managers, usually retirees, who are looking to fill in for a short period of time, and that we would be looking to hire somebody for that short period of time to fill in between Sherry's departure and the selection of a new city manager. So, would anybody like to make a motion?
Your Honor, I move that the city attorney be directed to solicit applications for the position of interim city manager.
Is there support?
A support.
May we take a vote?
Can I, can I ask a question about that first, please?
This is very strange for me to stand here.
May we have your name in the address?
Frank Rubino, 25 Oxford Boulevard. I just have a question. Why would we want to spend the money for an interim city manager when we're talking approximately five months, and we have an acting city manager on board? And you do understand if you do hire a manager, an interim manager from out of the district, you have to pay the living expenses, travel expenses, and all the expenses that go with it. Why would we even bother when we have somebody on board that could be here temporarily until you hire a new city, city manager? I just don't understand that.
Well, one of the things that we've talked about is certainly we would be looking for an interim, on the second point, an interim city manager who lives in the area. We're not, we're not looking to find somebody in Muskegon to, to, to spend that kind of money. Second, and, and I will open it up to the other commissioners to talk, we see, right now, Scott has the job of acting city manager and recreation director, and if we start to add an interim city manager, all of a sudden, he's fulfilling three different positions. And how do we back, do we backfill that, or is he able to handle all three positions? And we'd rather have an interim city manager that can fill this point with no, no interest in continuing, with the idea that Scott would then probably be, certainly would be interested, and I would hope that he would apply as well for the, for the full-time job. I don't know, do you want to add, Ann?
My feeling about the interim was that there are so, there's a lot of work, you know, that comes up right away, you know, including budgets and all of those things, and making sure that we are, you know, fully staffed, because if we're working at a two-thirds staff instead of fully staffed, especially with the new commission, that's going to have a lot more questions, it could, it, things may not go as smoothly as they could. And I know, you know, when I've spoken with city officials in other cities who have changed city managers, I know that they had good interim city manager experiences, you know, that were there from, you know, three to six months type of situations. So I think it was sort of just making sure that everything will be covered. I mean, Scott wears a lot of hats already, and so, I just wouldn't want to draw that on.
I don't know if I understand the difference between an interim and an acting. If he fills the role of an acting or an interim, that's one position, not two.
Well, he's an assistant, I think, is what, like, he's the assistant city manager and the recreation director.
Right, but he was appointed, I don't know, how many years ago, he was appointed acting city manager when the city manager was gone. So that's a different classification altogether.
But we had a city manager here. I mean, that's...
When the city manager was gone, he became the acting city manager of what he is right now. Okay. Excuse me?
Doesn't that sound temporary, like...
Excuse me. I'm addressing the commission. It, it seems to me that if he's an acting city manager, the only difference between an acting city manager and an interim manager is the, is the ability to make changes. If he doesn't make any changes until a new manager is hired, I don't understand why we spend the money. And you used to always question, and so Jason always questioned, every penny we spent, why would we spend all this money, which could be quite bad? And I understand, Kurt, you're talking about hiring somebody locally if they're available. And you may spend a month or two to do that, by that time, you're in the, the city manager process, why would we do both?
Money wouldn't be a traditional, Sherry would be gone, so...
Yeah, but she still has a payout package, and that's still gonna be the difference. Her payout package is gonna be substantial, which is, uh, how you keep that cost down by not having to pay an interim and a, the payout package. So, you're not saving that much, because you'll have a new city manager on board pretty quick. I just don't understand why you would spend that extra money. It's just my opinion.
I would, I would say that there's no guarantee that the process will take three or four months. It's probably better to be on the safe side with regard to balancing the workload of city hall, given that we will be entering a budget period that goes through June. And in the event that the process takes longer, it's good to make sure that we have the resources available additionally. None of us are aware or know what Scott's position will be in terms of applying for the position. It would be awkward for the city to, to have him in a position that he may be applying for. So, in my, at least in my opinion, it'd be good to have an interim city manager in place in the event that he decides to apply for the job, and in the event that hiring a, a full-time city manager takes longer than we had expected.
Okay. One point I'd like to make to that, and I'll bring something that Ann said, and other cities, when they use interim managers, a lot of interim managers have become permanent managers. So what I'm saying is...
It's entirely possible, and they may apply...
So, as an acting manager, he could become the same way, so I don't understand the difference.
Thank you.
Thanks. No, thank you.
I was an interim, by the way.
Yeah. So was I. So I understand that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would just like to state for the record in thirty minutes that Scott has been working as an acting city manager for 12 years. I did have an extended period of time when I was gone for surgery and recovery. He was still the recreation director at that time. I don't think there was, we missed a beat in any services. He has been in training with me, mostly with me, as the assistant city manager for a few years. And those of you that know Scott, he can do numerous things at any given time and any given day. I would not make a recommendation to hire Scott, I mean, I would bypass everything and hire him tomorrow if I didn't think he was qualified, because obviously, my goal for this city is that it continues to be successful. So I just, thank you, I just wanted that to be part of the record.
Is there any more discussion? Okay, do I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Can we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziyak?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is consideration of the resolution regarding the city's compliance with PA 152.
I think I've asked Scott to handle this.
Oh, okay, good, good. Scott?
Are you all set? Okay.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Commission. This item is on the agenda tonight because it's one of, I have some kind of sensitivity to it. In 2011, the state of Michigan passed Public Act 152 that requires public employers and elected officials to contribute toward their health care benefit costs. There's a, a number of items in the bill that come across, one of them are 80/20 split, or, you know, the employee pays 20%, the employer 80. There's a hard cap, where there's a, a set, a set amount that the cities can contribute, or there's ability where you're, you're not, you're exempt because you've already meet those requirements, or you don't receive economic, EVIP money, which is Economic Vitality Incentive Program money, which is revenue sharing. So, for the last two years, the city of Pleasant Ridge has opted out of this, of this requirement as part of our, our EVIP re, EVIP re, Part III requirement to get our money. So this year, Category 3 does not include this, before you pass this and you send it in. Now there's some other, other alternatives you have to do. So, at, at this time, we're asking again for a, for the opt-out, and there's a number of communities around us, including Oakland County, that does opt out of the, the rule. One of them is that the cost to employees is, can, can turn unreasonable, and, and can cause a hardship overnight. Right now, the employees are contributing 10% toward, toward their health care, and that's, you know, as, I want to say, six years ago, that was at, at zero, you know, the city was contributing everything, so we have started to do that. So, at this time, that can be, that can be equal to almost $3,000 a year if you have a, a family on there for the employee. And so, at this time, we're recommending that the city opt out for the, for this calendar year. And there's a possibility that this, this ends up going away with some of the Obamacare, I hate to use that term, it's so cliche at this point. But there's a lot of changes coming up with, with that act, and we're, we're gonna be a part of that, where we have to make some changes to our plans, and we have to really look at what we're gonna be able to offer to the employees and the retirees, because they fall under this category also. So, this could possibly be the last time we have this opt-out provision in there anyway, because of the, the changes that are coming forward, but at this time, we're, we ask for that approval. Any questions?
Is there a motion to approve?
Your Honor, I move that the resolution regarding PA 152 be approved as recommended.
A second?
I second that.
Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Foreman?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Kriziyak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, the next item is the governmental reports. I believe we have a couple representatives. Mr. Gillipper?
Right.
Sorry, the schools have to come second. County commission comes first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to congratulate all the newly elected officials, and I look forward to working with you. No major report, there's not a lot going on at the county right now, we just started our new budget here, so we're, we're good to go, I guess, for a while. There was a few cuts in the budget, but nothing major, so... And also, just to remind all the residents, if you haven't already, you should get your flu shots, and those are available through the county health department. The closest location is right over at Catalina and Greenfield, at the health center, and you can get them over there. So, that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions? Schools, Jim?
Good evening, Mayor and commissioners. I want to extend my congratulations and best wishes on your taking office, and the school board of Ferndale Public Schools will be ready and willing to work with you at every opportunity. We recognize the strong relationship that the schools and the city of Pleasant Ridge have had, and hopefully will, will build from there. The city certainly is an important part of our school district in terms of providing services, working with, you know, with Commissioner Perry on transportation. One of the initiatives that, that we're working on right now is developing safe routes to schools, so there's alternatives to using buses, so that kids have safe ways to bike and walk to schools. And in turn, we know that great neighborhoods certainly need great schools to continue that. So I want to thank the city commissioner, the city commission, the mayor, city manager, and the administration for your support of the schools. One of the most important things that we've been working on over the course of this year is developing compelling strategic plan and vision for the future of the school district. And, and certainly, as a part of that, we've had a fairly broad community process, we've heard from hundreds of people, where we've developed some great consensus, and I know Commissioner Perry's been to several of the meetings with our citizen strategic plan review committee. And so that plan is going to be coming before the school board at next Monday's meeting, so I'd invite any residents and any of you who would like to attend that meeting. We should have good representation from our citizen review committee there, and I think we'll have an exciting launch for the strategic plan. I know school board meetings and city commission meetings aren't always the most exciting events to attend, but certainly what comes out of that will be exciting. One of the things that, of course, the schools are facing is a long-term concerted attack on public schools in general and, and school funding. And so one of the, one of the items that will be near the top of our agenda in our strategic plan is having a strategic legislative plan, so that we can help to restore funding to this, to the state school aid fund, which is where we get the vast majority of our money. So there's a role that people... So there's a role that people can take in our school board. Vice President Karen Toomey, who's here, along with School Board Trustee Raylan Leek May. Vice President Toomey wrote a nice piece that was published in the Oakland County 115, and I believe she's posted on the PR Facebook page, that laid out, you know, sort of what's been happening with the state school aid fund. And there are things that I would urge residents to do that she put as action items for all of us, including contacting legislators. Following the Tri-County Alliance, which is Oakland Schools and Macomb Schools and Wayne County, all of their intermediate school districts have formed an alliance to keep people up to date on what's happening with legislation. And it's an easy way to get quick updates and blast off letters to legislators. Certainly, support PTA. I know that Commissioner Foreman is a supporter of our school PTAs. And certainly, the Ferndale Education Foundation is another avenue for support. That foundation provides many grants to teachers to do all kinds of things in their classrooms that are regularly operating, but it wouldn't allow. There are volunteer opportunities in the schools. And just in general, helping spread the word about the great things that are going on in the Ferndale schools is an excellent way to support our schools. And one way that I know in particular Pleasant Ridge supports the schools is through the Pleasant Ridge Women's Club Scholarship Fund. And I want to thank everybody who came out for the dinner last Friday. Unfortunately, I was in Virginia for a family wedding, or I would have been there too.
Delicious.
Yeah, I remember last year being well-fed there. So I want to thank everybody who came out for that and, in general, who supports the schools. So thank you. I enjoyed working with Ann Perry, and I look forward to working with Commissioner Foreman as he serves as liaison at schools.
Thanks, Jim. I just wanted to say, I've been so impressed with the strategic planning effort. And I've already told Amy Butters that I will be there Monday night. So and now, knowing that you're going to be presenting the plan, that's even more exciting, so I definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with all of you guys.
And I'm sure we'll see you around.
Yes.
You can't quit us.
No, I can't quit you.
All right, thank you. Oh, yes, and also on Monday, our state representative, Melon Cogan Lipton, will be there. So she's going to be providing an update on what's happening in the legislature concerning schools and education in general. So right at the top of our agenda will be Representative Lipton, and then we'll get right into the strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other governmental reports? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to public discussion. Any items that are not on the agenda? Anybody from the public wants to? Rob is always ready to get a. No?
Thanks. It's kind of a protocol, but prepared something on paper. Hi, I'm George Lenko, 32 Oakland Park. And it's usually not my style to give a written statement, but I just wanted to make sure I covered this. And I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for inviting input, which I think is important. And it's in that spirit that I share this. I wrote, "Mayor and Commissioners, you all know that I was a commissioner at one time, and you know or will find soon that it's both an honor and responsibility to fill that seat. I wish you all well, and I truly hope for your success. Beyond the responsibilities that any city leaders would have, you have a special responsibility to preserve the intangible that makes Pleasant Ridge the wonderful community that it's been for nearly 100 years. It's the reason all of us moved here and stayed. We were a walkable community before complete streets. We were a welcoming and tolerant community long before diversity and equality became political. We were regional when it made sense to be regional, and we protected our community when regional interests threatened us. Of the few modest requests that would go far to gain the confidence of the broad base of citizens who may or may not have voted for you, both on policy and a couple practical matters. On policy, it would be very reassuring to the residents if the current body clearly stated its intent on two matters, the segregated capital asset fund and the separate authority for fire services. Concerning SCAF, most residents know that since the 1980s, all our prior commissioners steadfastly defended the corpus of the 696 freeway settlement. It was our practice to use the interest, but never touch the principal. Since this body could have the supermajority to spend that, it would be reassuring if the new commissioner clearly stated its point of view on protecting the SCAF fund. On the fire authority, regarding regional fire authority, Ferndale officials have been quoted in the press that their current cost structure is unsustainable, and they would seek a separate taxing authority rather than change their operating model. I've attached the article if you wanted to see it. Our current fire costs, of course, are limited by contract, as we all know. It would be reassuring if the current commissioner clearly stated its point of view on preserving the current contract versus increasing Pleasant Ridge's costs. And then on a couple of practical matters, as the city commission considers administrative matters and prepares for the coming budget year, I'd like to offer suggestions that I advocated when I was on the commission. Some may appeal to you and our residents. First, with regard to water. Many residents were led to believe that the main distortion in our water bills was the application of administrative overhead, when in reality, it's sewage costs. Since there are many ways to allocate sewage costs across households, this has profound impact on water bills, depending on the method used. Years ago, our water bills separately detailed water costs from sewage costs from administrative costs. I'd like to suggest that we go back to that level of billing detail so that residents would get a clear view of the issues at hand. The other thing that I would like to suggest that the new commission reconsider its stance on water, or as you reconsider your stance on water, that you revisit residents' ability to drill wells for the purposes of irrigation or have dual meters for irrigation. Again, all related to the sewage issue. Next practical suggestion. And Commissioner Krzyzewski, maybe this is already part of the Recreation Master Plan. If it's not, I offer it, and if it is, I support it. The Gainsborough Shelter, of course, is underutilized, and the bathrooms are something that anyone enjoying the parks might need to use. The city's kept those mostly closed for pure vandalism and personal safety. I'd advocated in prior budget workshops that we should install a closed-circuit monitor at the front door with a bus-to-enter system, administered from the community center. That way, we could provide access during normal recreation hours, minimize risk to safety and property, and deploy a police quickly if anything was amiss. It wouldn't cost much. Departments do this all the time. And now that we've approved an infrastructure millage, I suggest this solution be seriously considered. And then, lastly, regarding pedestrian safety, based on traffic incidents and fatalities, the intersection at Woodrow and Sylvan, not 100 feet from us, is by far the highest pedestrian risk in our city and a real barrier between east and west. In prior budget workshops and our DDA Planning Committee, I'd advocated installing a xenon flashing walkway extending and extending crossing times to help pedestrians cross safely. The solution's in place in many nearby communities. And with our new infrastructure millage, I suggest this is worthy of consideration. So ideas for you to consider. Again, I wish you all the possible success in your new roles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Lenko, I'd like to extend my appreciation for you making these points this evening. I will assure you that myself, and I'm sure the rest of the commission will consider them with the weight that they deserve. Just the one point I would like to make about the Gainsborough Shelter that you mentioned, I share your ideas as far as making that shelter more accessible. One thing that has bubbled to the top in a lot of the conversations in the rec. meeting, I know in the last, in our last rec. meeting, when the Recreation Master Plan was being discussed, we had citizen input, and utilizing the bathrooms was one of the key points that people were emphasizing. And so I'd like to, just on that point alone, assure you that it is being considered. And I think if we can continue the conversation with, you know, concerned residents, and I would welcome anyone who has ideas to contribute those in writing either to Scott or at the next Recreation Commission. So I appreciate your comments.
Are there any other? Thank you, George.
Suzanne Levin, 9 Maywood. Welcome, everybody. Just an add-on to the shelter. I was walking the other morning, and I went to have a drink at the drinking fountain. And we have a dirty, rusty, non-functioning drinking fountain sitting out of the side of that building. That doesn't require a security issue. Push the button, nothing happens. There's leaves in it. It's attached to the side of the shelter. And I don't understand why it wouldn't work.
Well, we've talked about maintenance issues. We've talked about the water fountains in Greenfield, and these are the kinds of issues. Scott, did you want to?
Oh, yeah, the water at the shelter.
I see him kind of sliding.
The water at the shelter was shut off for the winter because the building's winterized. We've had pipes break there. The furnace will stop working, you know, just for whatever reason, you know, because it did. And we've had the pipes break over there. So we actually shut the water off and winterized the building now. So that drinking fountain is part of that shut off.
So don't expect water. At least it'll spring. Is there any others? Hearing none, we'll move to the next item, which is our city manager's report.
I have for you, Mayor and City Commissioners, that the curbside leaf collection program started full force this week. This is going to be a good season because all those leaves came down quickly. And that will continue through the end of the month. And I think Commissioner Krzyzewski mentioned it, or maybe it was Amy. The Christmas tree lighting ceremony will be held December 2nd. It's our opportunity to hear our mayor sing, so.
Which mayor is that?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we want to be practicing. Okay, thank you. Is there any other business from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I have an item. I would like to thank everyone for coming tonight. This is a fairly large crowd. And anticipating future larger crowds, maybe not every meeting, but some meetings, I was wondering about the cost of outfitting Four Ridge to broadcast live. I've been told that we can't do that at this time. When we have meetings, we're not able to broadcast live. So I wanted to see if it'd be possible for us to investigate that and come back with a cost estimate for it.
If that's something you'd like done, absolutely.
Yes, we would. I mean, we really want to encourage attendance.
Okay.
More the mayor. And we know that sitting behind the glass, I'm back there. You hardly hear a thing. It's very difficult. And it does get a little bit warm in here.
Could I suggest that that report not be due until January or February just because of the holidays in December and it's kind of crazy and the transition?
Yep. Another part to that, if I could add. In one of our meetings recently, Scott had mentioned live web streaming. I'm not really sure what the cost of that is either. So I thought I might be prudent at the same time to investigate that, so we could broadcast both on the Internet and on TV.
I think that's already underway, so.
Okay. Like I had mentioned to you, I've contacted a couple companies, and actually, that's probably the higher cost of the two. The one issue with the cable line is that we have, what, the cable companies will consider a weak signal coming into the building. We have two boosters just to be able to get the TVs in the wellness center. So you need to have like a 90% signal coming in to be able to broadcast live, and they need to run a new line. So that's the one major obstacle we have. But we'll look into that. But live streaming is something else we've already started to work.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Just I'd like to continue announcements for the book club this month. Actually, with the holidays in November and December, it was thought if we could combine those two months, it would probably make more sense. So the selection for the end of the year will be Cognitive Surplus: Creativity and Generosity in a Connected Age by Clay Shirkey. This is a very interesting topic. It talks about how the education of Americans over the last 60 years, aided in the last 20 by the advent of the Internet, has created an enormous abundance of knowledge throughout the population. Shirkey calls this mass of intellect a cognitive surplus. In the book, he examines ways in which we can utilize all this information for the betterment of all. So it's really, he talks about using technology to share information and make communities stronger. So I'd invite anyone who's interested. And I just want to reemphasize, it's not necessarily, you know, a book club that's about the book in question. It's about conversation. And it's not even about necessarily conversation about this book or its themes, but the conversation that can germinate between the group of neighbors who show up. And I would welcome anyone who is interested in either the book, the topic, or conversation to join us on December 17th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that the book club discussions really are about how do we take technology? How do we take neighborhood community building? And how do we bring it to Pleasant Ridge? And how do we kind of utilize all these resources and the resources that we already have in this community and continue to make this community a better one? And there are a lot of discussions about neighborhood building, about revitalizing our block clubs, trying to get much more communication. Again, don't be put off by the title of that book. I think I selected, and I'm not quite sure. But it's along those same themes. And we're going to continue to kind of, that's the theme in trying to think of books. And we're always looking for book club suggestions. So any suggestions that you have along those lines? Again, it is about community building.